I have a motion to adopt the agenda. To amend the agenda, okay? What would the amendment be?
I would like to postpone item ninety for the second meeting in May.
Okay, we have a second in that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, approval of the minutes for special meeting of April fourth and regular meeting of April eleventh.
And we approve the meeting as a minutes as written for the special meeting of the fourth of April and the regular meeting of the eleventh of April, two thousand twenty-two.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Please, item four, public remarks. Please come forward up to the mic and state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes, since we have a room full of people. On the line. It's moving.
Right inside as you face it. If I may, just the chair.
My lap right inside, yes.
For those of you that are maybe a little bit outside of the room and can't see, we have one of the, the two conference rooms are going to get opened up and you'll be able to stream it and see it there. If you then want to make a comment, come on down into the room. But we'll have it streaming in the two conference rooms right off the lobby on both floors. Okay?
Deborah Field, eighteen Oakdale Road. Good evening.
Excuse me. We have a lot of people in here tonight and I would like to hear every comment from everyone, so if you can keep it down while somebody's speaking. Thank you, go ahead.
Deborah Field, eighteen Oakdale Road. Good evening. I'm a parent educator in town and have been for twenty-one years. I thank you for your service to the town and understand the difficulty in weighing all options when considering budget recommendations. I strongly urge you to send the Board of Education budget recommended by the Board of Finance back to them for their thoughtful reconsideration. Cutting nearly eight hundred thousand dollars from an already stringent budget will be devastating to the town's school system. I agree that the two hundred thousand unexpected savings from insurance should probably be removed from the budget. However, I am shocked that the Board of Finance members want to cut another five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. One of the reasons is they want to take a stand against the state's unfunded mandates. Making drastic budget cuts and thus placing a burden on students and staff members is definitely not the way to go about this. I do not agree with unfunded mandates either, but they are mandates and schools need to comply with them even if the town does not agree with them. A more appropriate means of taking a stand is to communicate with the state legislators. There are actually some bills currently being proposed at the state level dealing with unfunded mandates to school districts and municipalities. Take a stand at the state level, not on the backs of our children. I understand the financial constraints that we all face during these difficult economic times. We must also realize that our schools are facing the same increases in costs of fuel, electricity, and supplies. This results in a corresponding increase in budget costs just to maintain what they have. Please keep this in mind when considering the budget. There is criticism that the superintendent always threatens with teacher and staff cuts. There aren't many extras in the budget to be cut that would account for such a large sum of money. Salaries and benefits are eighty-four percent of the operating budget, so of course, this is what would be cut in order to make up a large enough budget decrease in the magnitude recommended by the Board of Finance. Teachers and staff are the heart and soul of our schools and make a difference every day in students' lives. Quality staff members are so important to keep, especially with the increase in need for social emotional support in the schools. Cutting staff in the resulting larger classes will also be detrimental to the educational process in our schools. Studies have shown that large class sizes make differentiated instruction and needed individualized student attention extremely difficult. We must maintain what we have, not move backwards. Our students deserve better. I implore you to send the Board of Education budget back to the Board of Finance with a recommendation to restore necessary funding so that our schools can at least maintain their present staffing and resources for the next fiscal year. Thank you.
Katie Williams, I am living at forty-three Iowa Boulevard in town. I'm not only a resident of East Hampton, but also the school nurse at Memorial with a first grader and a third grader who also has ADHD. With the younger students at Memorial, it is crucial that these students receive the attention and education that our outstanding teachers provide. With smaller class sizes, our students will receive more personalized attention and teachers can form better relationships, not only with the students, but also with their families. It will be easier to identify and address any issues that may arise and teachers can devote more time to instruction and are able to provide more feedback. I know from experience, if it worked for my son's fantastic teacher and his feedback and observations, along with his reading skills, and also from teacher and support staff and the school psychologist thorough report, a lot of things with my son would have been missed with his ADHD diagnosis. Our teachers are doing incredible job. Not only are they teaching the expected curriculum, teachers of younger elementary students are educating them on following directions, listening, taking turns, being kind to others, bathroom and personal hygiene skills, all along with normal classroom learning and expectations. Some of our youngest learners have not ever been in a school setting before. We talk a lot about safety as a number one concern. Coming from the nursing office and health perspective, we see a lot of students in our office, sometimes up to about eighty-five, but also we have students with ADHD, anxiety, behavioral or emotional concerns, and more importantly, those with severe food allergies, diabetes, and seizure disorders. Our teachers are my extra set of eyes and ears on these students. With larger class size, it's not safe. Some of the subtle cues or behaviors from these students would be missed and possibly causing harms to these students. Please reconsider having teacher positions as you would not only be failing the community and the district, but also our children and risk their safety. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Snyder, eighteen Laurel Glen Drive. I'm in a unique position because I am a kindergarten teacher at Memorial School and I have three daughters who attend East Hampton Public Schools, so I am speaking to as an educator and a mother. I want to thank all the members of the Board of Education, Mr. Smith, Board of Finance, and Town Council for the time you put into the budget process. I know it's not an easy time. I am extremely concerned for the students, teachers, and administrators of East Hampton next year if this budget is not sent back to the Board of Finance. With so many teachers being cut, class sizes will increase to unsustainable numbers, not only for this year, but in the years to come. This will result in overcrowded classrooms and create detrimental challenges and obstacles for teachers to meet academic, behavioral, and mental health needs of students. I worked in Harvard for many years with twenty-seven and more students and I can tell you firsthand, it was nearly impossible to support all students. Mr. Smith put forth a budget that only maintains what we have. We are not immune to inflation here in East Hampton. We are all feeling the effects of higher food, fuel, electricity, and insurance needs, excuse me, increases. To cut almost eight hundred thousand dollars out of our school budget and say a message needs to be sent to the state because they cut funding for our schools is absolutely ludicrous. Do you think the state cares about a small town like East Hampton? What you're cutting is the educational experience of our youngest learners, cutting services for all kids and needs, and putting more burden on the teachers. Shouldn't our students' needs be our number one priority? And let's not forget how every single teacher rose to the challenge of teaching during a pandemic. We had to change our craft of teaching to accommodate online learning with minimal notice. The students of East Hampton did not miss a beat and learning continued no matter what, thanks to all these teachers in East Hampton. Now is not the time to turn your backs on us. We deserve better. The students of East Hampton deserve better. And lastly, I'm not sure this individual is here or maybe he's online. So the member of the Board of Finance who had the audacity to disrespect and offend every teacher in East Hampton, and in Connecticut, by the way, by posing the question, what are teachers, why aren't teachers doing their job? When wondering why test scores are not as high as what he thought they should be, do you not understand that we went through a pandemic and students are still trying to catch up, along with the fact that we are facing a mental health crisis? The question, why aren't teachers doing their job, depicts how far removed you are from our day-to-day hustle, struggle, and the obstacle. Every single day. I would like to personally extend an invitation into my classroom, Memorial School, room nine, Mrs. Snyder, so you can educate yourself firsthand on what we do every single day. Maybe if you experienced with your own eyes and walk a day in our shoes, you will not feel the need to ask this question ever again and you will support the incredible teachers and staff members I am honored to work with. You want increased test scores? Cutting teachers is not the answer and it's not going to make that happen. Please send this budget back to the Board of Finance and do the right thing for the children, teachers, and staff of East Hampton.
I'm a sophomore at East Hampton High School. I never imagined I'd be here, speaking in front of my classmates, my teachers, my town. I'm here to speak for the teachers that live here. The psychologist whose fate isn't someone else's hands. The students not in attendance. East Hampton measures the school's success based on metrics, but us students don't know these metrics. It may be raised on standardized test scores, surveys, or graduation grades, but that does not capture the whole picture. As a student, I'm an insider point of view. I see what happens and how your affect should, and how your actions affect students. I have personal experience, experiences of friends and those who have answered surveys. Cutting eight hundred thousand dollars out of our budget is going to impact everyone. Everything I'm about to say is personal and a real-life experience. Teachers are important in our, we see them five days a week, nine months a year, for at least twelve years. Whether they know it or not, they impact us. They shape who we become and having one good teacher can change the course of our lives. There's a teacher in the high school who everyone, and she knows everybody. She may be a teacher, but she doesn't just teach us. She forms connections with us. I have the pleasure of being in her homeroom, where at least five students visit her every day, just to talk. I've overheard students' conversations about grooming issues on field trips and the pressure to get good grades. She's a trusted adult. Students need her and yet she will be gone if this budget cut goes through. The survey I conducted received positive mentions, trusted adults, in each recorded response. One responded and said, "My math teacher let me come to them instead of letting every student be pants up." One student that took the survey expressed that the school psychologist helped them, saying, "I was different in so many ways from the kids I went to school with."
Eye contact would be helpful. Teenagers speak.
Excuse me. You do not have the right to interrupt this meeting. You speak out again, I will have you removed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was different in so many ways from the kids I went to school with. It was hard making friends. My school psychologist made it easier for me to be comfortable with myself. Having a trusted adult is important when you're going to school. There are social pressures, feelings of constantly being judged, and adults treat you like your voice doesn't matter. According to the CDC, forty-two percent of students felt persistently sad or hopeless in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two percent of students seriously contemplated suicide. Of themselves. I don't know about you, but I don't think watching students suffer from depression and struggle with suicidal ideology is your goal. If you go through this budget cut and let the school psychologist go, these numbers will rise. Us students may lose the only support we have. In order for students to succeed academically, they need.
You're over three minutes, son.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marley Zinkman. Although I have released my whole life, I'm a recent transfer student to East Hampton Public School. Although I have been here a very short time, I can see how our English department and teachers in general strive for the students' best at all times. They help us achieve our goals and overcome our failures. I've never felt care as I felt by East Hampton teachers. By a purpose budget cut of almost one million dollars, you are making the quality of learning poor. This year SAT scores were through the roof, not only because of the students' hard work and dedication, but also because of the amazing teachers they have supporting them every step of the way. Especially in our ELA department, we have SAT prep that we do every week to help us understand the test. If you go through with this budget cut, I can tell you scores will not be as high, students' grades will be affected, budget cuts mean bigger classrooms and less attention towards students. Our teachers help us a lot. They will, they will help teach and teach less with thirty kids per room because of the amount of questions they'll be answering. Our teachers care and the beauty too from our group's budget cuts. Thank you for your time.
It's inspiring to see so many people here tonight coming together in similar goals. What you see here is a cross-section of the East Hampton community. Regardless of politics or our differences, we're all here because we recognize that the Board of Finance's proposed budget was a great disservice to this town. Simply put, the cuts of the Board of Finance's proposing to education spending will devastate East Hampton schools. The finance members who are pushing these cuts are dramatically undervaluing the importance of our education system to the people of this community. The loss of at least five teachers and critical specialists will take a big toll on our town. Beyond the emotional impact on our kids and the morality of educators, we are threatened now with class sizes of twenty-five kids or more, at a time when we are already asking teachers to perform miracles. Students who need extra attention are going to get lost in a classroom that day. Any progress our schools have made to overcome learning loss imposed by the pandemic will be moved. We hear plenty about the importance of mental health services. Well, this budget proposal stands in the face of progress and will further alienate students. We've heard the reasons for such a budget cut and we've listened as members of the Board of Finance and publicly doubted our educators. The truth is that we are lucky to have such great and dedicated educators among us. What message does this budget proposal send to them? That their work is undervalued and that saving a few bucks in taxes is more important than the children in this community? Like many people here, the quality of schools and services were key factors when my wife and I moved here in twelve, moved here twelve years ago. East Hampton is a community that set down roots that takes care of its citizens and values its schools. This budget proposal is the enemy of progress and so will diminish the quality of life so many people here value dearly. I urge you all to reject this budget proposal. Send this budget back to the Board of Finance and tell them to restore it. Our schools are too important to place so recklessly on the block and if you don't believe me, just look at the faces across the screen. We're going to fight hard because we know what's right and this budget is wrong. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Saul, eight four seven. I'm a sophomore at East Hampton High School. I come before you today to address an urgent matter that concerns all of us. With the budget cuts, one of the proposals including, as concludes, cutting a teacher who has made a significant impact on my life and many others. It's not just about one teacher or the other teacher's being cut, but it's about the bigger picture. If this proposal gets through, it will result in larger class sizes across all grades from kindergarten to twelfth grade. This will make it harder for students to develop, develop strong relationships with their teachers and get the personalized attention they need to succeed. As someone who has been fortunate enough to benefit from smaller class sizes and build a relationship with a teacher, I can tell you firsthand how important this is. It's not just about getting a good grade, it's about feeling supported, feeling heard, and valued in the classroom. Moreover, larger classes can also impact the quality of education we receive. When a teacher is spread too thin, they might, they may not be able to provide the same level of tension, feedback, and resources to each student. This can lead to gaps in our learning and limit our potential. Our education is not just a matter of personal achievement, but also a reflection of our community's values and priorities. By investing in our schools, we invest in our future. Our education is not only important for our personal growth and success, but also plays a vital role in the growth and success of our town and future generation. By providing high-quality education to our students, we prepare them to become the future leaders, innovators, and problem solvers who will drive our town's growth and progress. I have no doubt that there are kids in this room right now and in my classrooms who will make a positive impact on our world and community because of the education they have received thus far. They'll be the ones who create jobs, start businesses, and contribute to the community in countless ways. Moreover, a strong education system attracts new families and businesses to our town, shows that we value education, and are committed to providing the best opportunity in our city. This in turn helps to improve the overall quality of life in our town, create a positive cycle of growth and development. Overall, cutting the school budget and limiting our education will not only impact us today, but also affect the future generations and the growth of our town. We must invest in our education system to ensure that our future is bright and prosperous. We cannot afford to make this school budget smaller and sacrifice the quality of education that us as students deserve. Together, we can make a difference and ensure that every student has opportunities to thrive. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank all the town council members. I know sitting behind there can be a thankless job and this is a pretty difficult thing to do. Wes Jenks, forty-five Meeks Point Road, former vice-chair of the Board of Finance here in East Hampton. Before I'll take serious East Hampton, I sat down town council member that told me the big was going to be the teachers' unions and the amount their salaries increase every year combined with the state cutting funds at the same time. It's created a situation that isn't very good. I served on the, on the Board of Finance for two years, so I'm a bit, I'm gonna try to keep it to math so nobody gets offended by what I have to say here. When in multiple meetings I asked Mr. Smith, you know, how do you balance a budget? And I'm using round numbers here, when the, the public tends to approve about a two-and-a-half percent increase in the taxes every year, while the town contracts for a three-and-a-half percent increase every year in their budget. So when I asked Mr. Smith, what do you do when you're short a percent every year? It was a loaded question. I have my own small business. I know what happens when you contract for more money than you receive every year. It's a situation that is, is facing all towns, all states. This is something that, frankly, this is the reason why I resigned from the Board of Finance. I do not see a solution to this. I'm happy to meet with all the town council members and Board of Finances and any concerned citizens that want to discuss what I'm talking about. But the issue is, is far deeper than them just cutting the budget. We don't get enough money every year to meet the contractual budget. So to use an analogy, it's like maxing out your credit card and not having enough money to pay the interest on that card every year, which means every year there's going to be loss of programs, loss of teachers, and this is just getting worse and worse and worse. And quite frankly, I'm not sure how you solve this problem, but this is facing every town country as a whole. And combine that with out-of-control inflation, the past two years we've had inflation of almost seven percent. So our dollar is worth less and the costs keep rising. And unfortunately, the public will only approve a certain increase. And what happens if we go up on our taxes six-and-a-half percent every single year? At some point, it's not sustainable anymore. People won't be able to afford to pay taxes anymore. They'll have to get rid of their homes and they'll have to move on. So I understand everyone's frustration, but just wanted to let everyone know it's a much deeper problem than you think.
Good for you guys to show.
That's good, thank you. Yeah, Kathy, we have that buzzer where I cannot hear that thing going off. That's why I was trying to adjust my phone so I could hear my phone, because I can't hear yours. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the news cruise for answering my emails and actually calling. I'm a senior at East Hampton. I'm a senior at East Hampton High and a lifelong resident of our town. I truly value your time and dedication to helping East Hampton and I understand we're struggling as an economy and unfortunately costs have to be made somewhere. However, our public school system is not the place to cut our budget. As you know, the proposed budget includes potentially cutting staff members, supplies, et cetera. As a student, I know most of the supplies in our classrooms are bought by our teachers out of their own pocket. So to cut the budget there is unfair to teachers. Instead of cutting supplies, how about we get rid of most of those useless televisions that are all around the high school, in both hallways and classrooms? In my four years at East Hampton High, I've never once seen students stop to look at the monitors in the hallway or lunchroom for actual valuable information. And in the classrooms, I've never once seen teachers use their small monitor at all. I also think that having smart boards is unwise, as I've heard multiple staff members say that these are a waste of whiteboard space and always glitch or have to be fixed. We can simply use projectors on whiteboards like we once did. I hate for us to go backward with technology, but I hate for us to lose valuable staff members more so. I know that the proposed teachers to be cut would do absolutely anything to help their students. Our teachers have literally dedicated their entire lives to bettering their students' lives while unfortunately risking their lives. Our teachers are not only our protective, our educators, but also our protectors. I know that our teachers would throw themselves in front of bullets to protect us. So I'm attempting to do the same for our teachers by keeping them exactly where they're meant to be in our schools. I'm aware that none of you want to cut teachers from our schools, but we are talking about uprooting entire lives. As you know, when we lose teachers, our class sizes get larger inherently causing us not to learn as well and not to mention, there's no space in our classrooms that it. Oh, where was I? And personally, my most important reason for adjusting my proposed budget, when you cut our teachers, you make us lose one of our trusted adults and save confidence in the building. I was fortunate enough to have an elementary school psychologist help me with my nightmares. I started to get panic attacks in middle school and psychologists helped me there too. My high school psychologist helped me with my confidence and self-worth. I've had teachers throughout my thirteen years at East Hampton help me with my mental health. I will never forget the staff that was supporting me. As a senior, I'm aware that this budget is probably not going to affect my education, but it affects the education and lives of my underclassmen friends, my little brother who's on the spectrum, and the future students of our district. We have a fabulous school system right now because of our current budget and most importantly, because of our current staff. The integrity of our town would be ruined if we allow this to happen and I guarantee that our students will not sit idly by and let beloved staff members lose their jobs and connections they made. The backbone of our entire school system is our amazing staff. And to rip out even just one of those essential bird of prey from our backbone, we all crumble.
Town Council, my name is Emily Jovell. I'm a class of twenty-two students at East Hampton High School. I am standing here before you to address the budget cuts for education. Education is the foundation of who we are and who we become. My peers and I strongly believe that decreasing opportunities for us as students creates limitations for our futures. Education helps develop critical skills, not only for the future, but for all posterity. This budget cut forces our schools to limit curriculum offerings, increase class sizes, and cut back on teacher positions. These cuts create lasting consequences for not only the students currently in East Hampton Public Schools, but for all future students. Firstly, limiting curriculum offerings restricts students from exploring their interests. One thing that makes EHS so special is our diversity in our curriculum. Our school offers a variety of classes from team sports, Shakespeare, botany, and African-American Latino studies. Taking away such classes discourages interests and cuts off important viewpoints that encourage acceptance and diversity. Secondly, increasing class sizes has negative effects on students' learning abilities and productivity. Research states that students, especially elementary age, perform better in a smaller class because they are able to strengthen social connected, connections and engage in classroom. Increasing class sizes also, um, increasing class size takes away from those students who may need extra help. Finally, coming back on teacher positions hinder students' emotional and social development. EHS has created a caring and understanding environment that starts with our teachers. Over the past two years, EHS, I have met many wonderful teachers who pushed me to not only be the best student I can be, but the best person I can be. These connections have made my time here not only enjoyable, but impressionable. Town Council, I'm here today to fight for my education and for my future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joelle, I'm in town Hurley. I am gonna sweep off the cup. I, the pandemic has exacerbated the inequalities. I, the pandemic has exacerbated the inequalities in this state. We are one of the richest states in this entire country, yet one of the most equal. We are the third most unequal state in this country. The difference, the wage gap between the rich and the poor just keeps getting bigger and bigger. And all we do is just accept the status quo at the, at the town level and at the state level. To be upfront, I work for the AFL-CIO, I'm a political director and I lobby at the Capitol every single day. So, and I lobby for the teachers and for the parents. And I see on a daily basis what these teachers and parents are going through, how they are suffering in the classroom. Cutting jobs, cutting their benefits, any of that is not the answer to this. What it is, is obviously a revenue issue, correct? It's a revenue issue. So instead of cutting, we need to be fighting, I'm telling you all, at the state level, we need to be fighting for more revenue. You all, I, I hope you all pay attention to the news. We have the greatest surplus that we've ever had. So why do we have the needs that are the most unmet needs ever? We have people coming to the Capitol every day and rallying and, and we need your voices heard. We need to figure out ways to get around the spending cap. That's why we can't spend the money to fund the towns. So without their voices, people think, oh, it's okay, we can just go along with the status quo. And this isn't, this isn't a part of things, trust me, it's across the board. I see it every single day and it's so disheartening. So I, before I hope you all, I hope there's mechanisms here in the town that are working at the state level to figure out ways to get more revenue. There are things in the, in the works, I promise you. But without your voices, every single day, calling your legislators, you think it's not, it doesn't work, but I'm telling you, it does. Call Senator Needleman, call Representative Haynes, and tell them what it is you expect from this budget and what you need. Thank you.
I'm a student seventeen thirty lane. As a small business owner, I understand the impact of rising costs and inflation. I feel this in the equipment I purchase, the gas and electricity I consume. However, I also understand that as a responsible business owner, I need the camera and the equipment to do my job. As a small business owner, it is my responsibility to uphold the quality of product and services to my customers. To be able to compensate for the rise in cost, I know it is my responsibility to acquire new clients, get more jobs, and generate more income. Do I work harder? I sure do, but you won't find me cutting corners to try and get the same results. The same method needs to be applied to our services in town, including education. You cannot achieve the same quality results by drastically cutting the budget. One of the things you must address instead is how to increase the talent of East Hampton's revenue. What is the short-term and long-term plan to increase the income of our town? We have beautiful amenities such as the lake in the village. What are the communities doing to attract more tourists and visitors to spend their time and money here in our community? The answer is not to do these services, it's to increase the revenue. Additionally, I just want to stress some of the untruth statements made by the board of finance. And this is where I'm parroting. There are a lot of unanswered questions and that the school work should be more forthcoming. You should know that East Hampton Budget Book was a state award winner and was honored for information transparency, transparency, clarity, and presentation. They've since used the same outlet presenting its budget. For any questions that could not be answered in this booklet, why didn't board of finance members ask during a board of education meeting? By not doing so is a careless responsibility. So education. And for those of you who agree, because we want to make sure it's crystal clear. You must send the budget back to the board of finance to restore its funding to vote, to vote the, to the education budget. Please raise your hand if you agree with that statement. These are the
Excuse me. We'll keep your comments to this chair and to this council. You are not playing to the audience. I will not allow that.
These are the audience members who will be voting in the and for the
I'm a seventh grade student at the middle school and one cut that will affect me and other students like me is removing the school psychologist. This will affect us since our, yeah, sorry. This will affect us since our peers who will need the help and services won't receive it and will remain in classes we have with them, which will distract us from a positive learning experience since their conditions may get worse. Other factors that would negatively affect the students in all our schools, like eliminated teachers. Which would lead to bigger class sizes and bigger class sizes in all schools would mean that classrooms would be overcrowded, even though classes in middle school are already tight. This would be a huge distraction since other students' belongings would pile on top of one another and more students means higher noise level program. This can apply to more than this is school I attend. I strongly encourage you to observe how money is already being spent in our school community and reconsider how much money you are being cut, getting cut. Thank you.
Good evening, Brendan Hines, nine Terry on ride. I just have a brief comment that I was very disappointed when I saw emails stating that the budget was going to be cut down by the board of finance. By the board of finance. I think the board of ed puts a lot of time into creating a budget. I think it would have been very reasonable if they looked at the insurance changes and cut that out of the budget, but to cut eight hundred thousand out. Really seems like it's well and above beyond what people here would expect. I thought one of the nice things about bifurcating the budget was we'd be able to vote on both budgets. I'd like a chance to vote for the budget. If it doesn't go through, I have every faith that the board of ed will make really clear cuts. Based on what the town would want as opposed to just the board of finance. Thank you.
I'm a senior at East Hampton High School, and even though next year I will be graduated, the education of East Hampton students are important to me as I'm a proud bell ringer. I've heard there have been complaints about SAT scores and the lack of improvement despite jumping forty points. I want us to not forget the past three years where learning has been a challenge for all. I am currently a senior and nothing could have prepared me for my high school experience. From online learning to coming into school for two to three days a week and even taking math breaks, learning has been a struggle. To pretend like the world was fine despite it being shut down. Nationwide, there is a decline in SAT scores. The national average in twenty nineteen was one thousand one hundred and nineteen compared to twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two's national average, which is a one thousand fifty, sixty-nine points apart. If you are truly concerned with the education of East Hampton students, then teachers should be the last thing cut on this budget. I fear the teacher shortage nationwide will inevitably cause a decline in educational standards. Lack of education can lead to the unknown. And as my teacher, Mr. Lucas taught me, humans typically fear what we do not know. And what we don't understand, that fear then turns into anger and anger to hatred. Thank you.
I'm Kristen Plenary, eight Plenary Row. I'm a veteran teacher at the high school and a parent to. The board of education and Mr. Smith agreed on what a reasonable school budget should look like for the coming year. It was not formulated with wants and extravagant requests, but was built around the absolute necessities to provide this town's students with a competitive, rigorous, and rewarding education in our schools. The cuts that the board of finance is demanding is shameful and nothing less than insulting to families, students, and the professionals who worked tirelessly for East Hampton students. East Hampton is always among the lowest in per pupil spending in our third, and there is nowhere else to cut besides people. The very people who support, care for, and teach this town's youth from pre-K to graduation. It is clear that the board of finance does not actually care what families want for their children or what is in the youth's best interest. They only care about the bottom line. They claim they want to show the state how they feel about unfunded mandates. The irony is that this is perhaps the one thing administrators, educators, parents, and all the boards could agree on. Yes, if the state tells us we have to do something, it would be helpful to districts if the state provided funding for those initiatives. But these cuts the board of finance are asking for aren't sticking it to the man, they're sticking it to the town. Particularly to the students who need a competitive education, and that is not okay. I struggle to calmly express how deeply insulting it is to have individuals, particularly those in power, say that teachers aren't doing their jobs. Our test scores show differently. The number of students and parents here tonight show differently. And people with a true pulse on the community see so very many positives coming out of our schools. Besides our academic successes, with a little effort, you will find passionate students who work hard and are rewarded with scholarships, championships, accolades, and more. East Hampton schools produce amazing young people, young people who are dedicated to learning and improving our world. They work toward fairness, inclusivity, responsibility, and doing what is right. Teachers and staff here inspire students from pre-K all the way to the class of twenty twenty-three to persevere, to do better. And they do. The board of finance needs to do the same. My colleagues and I at the high school and every single person either of my children have ever come across have done nothing less than go absolutely above and beyond every single day. We are professionals with numerous advanced degrees, decades of experience, knowledge and educational research. And beyond all that, we care deeply about our students and will fight to do what's right by them. As a parent, I can tell you with certainty that the parents of the teens I know and the parents of my children's peers have settled here not for the lake or the quiet seclusion, but for the opportunity that our schools have always managed to provide despite annual cuts and doing more of less. Doing more of less is only so far. You're at the end of that line.
For Elaine, I was going to talk, but I'd like to give my three minutes to Oliver so that he can finish what he was saying.
In order for students to successfully, to succeed academically, they need support systems in place to get through life. There is no one size fits all. Every person and situation is unique. Some people benefit from the school psychologist, other teachers, or support staff. These people will be laid off. Yes, someone may take on that teaching load, the educational portion. That does not necessarily include the emotional foundation for students to learn and succeed. There is a significant need for student support in this post-COVID world. Don't undercut the limited support we already have in place.
Can I try and keep this short and sweet with respect to everybody in line that wants to speak today? Adam Doofy, six-four, Barton Hill Road. I'm speaking in strong opposition to any education or any reduction of board of education budget. As a person who works in engineering, design, construction industry, I'm involved in design, school renovations, updates, and new school projects on a daily basis. I'm also required as part of my purview to get involved in the related town meetings, land use meetings, planning and zoning, et cetera, discussing needs and wants of the town and citizens, as well as recommendations of the school systems and programs. Two items that continually get discussed and expanded in part discussions and implemented are more funding for education to better our children's education experience, as well as enhance security within the schools and within the town proper. Towns and cities around us are increasing their budgets for education and security. While the board of finance recommendation is to reduce our requested education budget by almost eight hundred thousand dollars, with no real discussion on as where those cuts can come from exactly and why. This is a big mistake. We need to invest now as part of getting in front of the problem and not behind it. Kicking the can down the road for our education is not going to work and never has. Playing catch up with the budget that funds our children's school experience and their future will undoubtedly negatively affect their outcome. I have lived in this town my whole life, thirty-seven years, and have paid taxes as long as the government has been all taken from me. As a father of two young children, the oldest who will officially enter the town's education system this year for kindergarten, I'm very disappointed that my first meeting for the town is to discuss a large cut in the education budget that's even being considered, and I am in strong opposition. I'm also not positioned any, any related cut regarding any police or, or regarding our, our town security. Our policemen are overtaxed at this point with a reported increase in break-ins and related crimes around town. And related incidents around us, including city and town-wide school incidents. I think it's a large, large big problem to, to cut the legs off money from the police department. I just want to give a big thanks to all the students that came and spoke today. It's
My name is Allison Hug, although one seventy later. I'm a sophomore at East Hampton High School. I'm here today to talk on behalf of the students who will, who will be deprived of having a specific teacher if you pass the budget cuts. Before I continue, I would like you to think of your favorite teacher from school. More likely than not, you thought of a teacher who saw you for who you are rather than academically and treated you with kindness and respect. For many of us at East Hampton High School, that teacher is the one I'm talking about. A trusted adult and friend to many. Whether it be a quick hello and smile in the hallway or a serious one-on-one conversation. To make sure every student is heard. And while learning about World War I and Punnet Squares are important, cutting a teacher who not only cares about our grades, but also our well-being's is not a great idea. You may want to rethink your priorities if this budget cut is what you think is right. Thank you.
Well, this town certainly has a beautiful lake and a wonderful community. The reason my parents moved to this town is solely because of its education system. I'm sure the same is true for many others here, including the countless students who showed up today against this preposterous budget cut. This motion to cut over eight hundred thousand dollars from the school budget defies the very principles of this town. So far, this has postponed five teachers, including two elementary teachers and one high school emu's teacher. If these two elementary teachers are removed, class sizes could increase to around twenty-eight students. Twenty-eight kids all learning how to read years behind schedule due to the pandemic. Twenty-eight kids all vying for help on their math homework or the latest history worksheet. Twenty-eight kids all being failed by their education system. A study in Tennessee put this to the test, that students in smaller class sizes had a standard much higher classroom engagement. It's smaller class sizes are far more beneficial to students. Moving to the high school, removing this English teacher cuts out an incredibly valuable position. At EHS, each student must take English every semester. With over five hundred and twenty students and five English teachers, this means that every single teacher is required. Furthermore, this doesn't account for the plethora of English collectors we have, which are often some of the most popular in the school. Our school also offers three college-level English courses. Cutting this teacher cuts out somebody who can teach some of these courses, potentially causing students to not be able to gain college credit and stand out in the competitive field of college admissions. It's important to help our students by offering them more opportunities, not diminishing them. Going back to class sizes, reducing the number of English teachers from five to four will have drastic impacts. Not only will class sizes increase, teachers will have less free time for classes to teach on their already packed schedule. Just talking about everything for mental health. One of my advisors is how to choose something which is a teacher that is student performance. For example, if they have concerns about a student threat, they would go to their trusted adult. Cutting any teacher out removes a trusted adult for countless students affecting the safety of the school. This also removes support systems that have been built up between teachers and students, something that can be detrimental if taken away. I'm only sixteen years old, and although I don't have much of a say, I'm asking you to make your decision on behalf of myself and all the other students here. I'm asking you to defy those budget cuts that will inevitably cause harm to our learning. Thank you for your time.
My name is Denise Sawyer. I reside at seventy-seven Barton Hill Road in East Hampton. And I just wanted to say that I came here tonight because I believe education is the key. We all know that we need education as a foundation for all of our children. We're all here because we have gotten some type of education. I appreciate the time that I've been allowed to speak to you, but I also want you to hear me. Education is the foundation. Without these kids getting the education they need, you will not have a tax base and you will not have people who will be able to buy houses and maintain this town. There are unfunded mandates everywhere. The town council is an unfunded, unfunded mandate. The president, he makes unfunded, unfunded mandates. We need to do better. The message that I gave to my daughter at dinner tonight was, I'm going to the meeting tonight because I need to fight for your education for the teachers that you, that educate you, so that you can have smaller classrooms. because I need to fight for your education for the teachers that you, that educate you so that you can have smaller classrooms. She knows that. All the parents here have children who hear what's going on and how important it is that we value, that they know that their town thinks it's important for them to be educated. And these teachers are important. My daughter would fire me in a minute because I was not the best homeschool teacher. I failed, and I know how hard it is. I've also worked with children for over twenty-seven years. These teachers are not just teachers and educators. They're mandated reporters. They're my eyes and ears. They have helped me find homes for other, for when children have needed other homes. I respect that everybody is taking time out of their night. But the most important people that are, are missing in this room are all the children that are waiting for you to make the right choice, that to, to do what is right. To fund the teachers, to give them the support, educationally, physically, and emotionally, and socially. It's unacceptable to use them to cut, to, 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 to use them as, it's not their fault. We need to do better. We need to find a way. That's what, that's what, that's who we are. We, we are East Hampton. We can do this. There's no reason why it can't be done. It's unacceptable to cut the budget and let these teachers go. These children deserve a classroom size that is not twenty-eight or more. That's all I have to say.
Hello, Danielle, sixteen, Barton Wood Drive. Um, two budgets that I think it's unexcusable to cut would be education firstly, also the police budget. Um, the police chief works very hard. The police officers in our town work very hard. And to just say, oh, well, your requests don't matter is sort of goes, you know, behind all of the things that we need. We need safety. We need to, um, to be able to support our town in that respect. Um, and then educationally, I am one of the students that Katie has the pleasure of seeing basically daily because she's a seizure kid. And, um, you know, she is able to do such a nice job at school right now because of the parents that work with her, because of the teacher that works with her, because there is enough staff to meet her needs. If we're going to be cutting that many staff, then you're going to have kids like my kid who suddenly are no longer going to be successful in the school. And let me tell you, you think it's expensive to fund regular kids, you should think about the cost of outplacements. You don't want to play that game because the school that I work at is about $90,000 a year per kid. So just a little food for thought that the budget is great. Give the kids the services they need. That way the kids that can stay in district can stay because they have the right staffing. If we're going to suddenly start cutting that, then you're going to have a whole ton of families with students who's are unsafe in our schools because there's not enough people to support them. And I'm telling you, if you don't want $90,000 times, far many kids in this district could use a little additional support. So with respect, send it back, make it better.
My name is Chrissy Aloya, and I live at eighty-two by Old Drive. The budget put in place by the Board of Ed is to allow our children to at least keep receiving the same level of education that they were in prior years. The Board of Finance should be ashamed of themselves for proposing this outlandish cut to our children's education. I say this because it was done recklessly and without any substance or facts backing it up. In my opinion, there's nothing more important in this world than our children and their education, and this cut directly affects every single child and teacher in our schools. Listen to your citizens. We do not want the Board of Ed, Board of Ed budget cut. Show everyone that no matter your political affiliation, you see that this cut is not the best interest of our town and our kids. Thank you.
I'm not a farmer, twenty-seven, Carrington Drive. Good evening, members of the town council. I stand before you today to speak of an issue that is of great importance to our community, the school budget. As we all know, schools are the foundation of any community. They provide children with the education and skills they need to succeed in life. They play a crucial role in shaping the future of our society. I've come before you today to urge you not to cut the school budget. In recent years, we have seen the effects of underfunding schools. Class sizes have increased, teachers have been laid off, and extracurricular activities have been reduced or completely eliminated. These cuts have a profound impact on our students, our teachers, and the East Hampton community. By cutting the school budget, we are not only hurting our children's education, but we are also hurting our economy. Businesses and families are less likely to move to our town if our schools are underfunded. Furthermore, investing in education is an investment in our future. By providing our children with quality education, we are equipping them with the tools they need to succeed in a rapidly changing world. We are preparing them to be the leaders, innovators, and problem solvers of tomorrow. I understand that budgets are tight and that difficult decisions must be made, but I urge you to consider the long-term impact of cutting the school budget. By investing in education, we are investing in our community's future, and that is an investment that will pay dividends for years to come. In conclusion, I urge you to reject any proposals to cut the school budget. Let us work together to ensure that our schools have the resources they need to provide our children with education they deserve.
Chris Briggs, nineteen, Barton Hill Road. I'm also, uh, two years ago, I was lucky enough to get my dream job teaching right here in town at the middle school. Uh, I've been a teacher for eighteen years, and now I get to teach in the town that I live in, that I love, that I work hard every day to support. And when I say work hard, I mean work hard, and I'm not the only one who works hard. And I want to thank the parents and the, and the students who have come here today to acknowledge uh, that the teachers here are working their tails off every single day. Thank you for being here and supporting the schools. I would like you, as the town council, to please do your job. Listen to the people of this town. Send the budget back to the Board of Finance so that they can restore that money and then send it to the people to vote. It is our job as a community to vote on that budget and tell you all what we think is important. And we think that education is important. We think that teachers are important. We think that our children are important. Our children are more important than to be used as pawns in a petty game by the Board of Finance to send a message to the state. The only way that we will get better as a community, better as a town, is to fund our schools. And the Board of Education has sent a budget forward that makes sense for where we are. Mistress, I went to the Board of, uh, the budget, uh, meetings. I did my job to go. I hope that you went to the budget meetings for the Board of Ed. I hope that the Board of Finance went to the bu- budget meetings because that, guess what? That's their job. And I challenge them to come to our schools. See the job that we're doing. Ask us to our face if we're doing our jobs or not. Because I'll tell you what, I see it every single day. The teachers are bending over backwards to do their jobs. Now it is time to do yours. Send it back to the Board of Finance. Let the people choose. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm very beginning forty-one by Old Drive. Uh, I stand before you today not only as the resident of this town, but as an elementary educator in East Hampton Public Schools since for over twenty-three years. I implore you to reconsider putting back the $792,000 supposed to be cut for this simple year. I speak for the students, the teachers, the parents of East Hampton, who will directly be affected by this cut. As an educator, I've experienced firsthand the impact of increased class sizes and how it directly affects students academically, socially, emotionally, especially at the elementary level. In the past, increased class sizes have affected the delivery of instruction, caused more behavioral issues, and has affected one-on-one time students. The pandemic has been life-changing for most of, for our most vulnerable children. The proposed cut to the education budget will have long-lasting effects on our student population that will be beyond challenging to recover from. It is heartbreaking knowing the consequences firsthand of the budget cut. Increased class sizes during, during foundational years, which is, which will hinder teachers from giving the personal and professional attention needed to be student placed in our classroom. Making these cuts now will shortchange our students long-term. Quite frankly, haven't they been through enough? The backbone of any community is its educational system. It's our responsibility, citizens of this town, to provide the best possible education for our children. How can our children compete with others in the real world? Be sure to change that. Finally, I'm disappointed by the comment, why aren't teachers doing their job? Come in my room. I will show you. How can you expect us to do more? You continue to take away the vital resources needed to help all children to be successful. Thank you for your consideration and the opportunity to share my opinion on this matter.
Good afternoon. I'm Nicole Carl, a junior at EHS, thirty-six, twelve, Mary Drive. I've talked to and seen so many of my past, current, and future teachers at this meeting. Teachers who have changed my life for the better. I wouldn't be the student or person I am today without every single one of those teachers. If we lay off any teachers, let alone five of them, our education will take a major toll. It is five less teachers to make a difference to the youth here. Five less teachers to help students grow. Five, five less teachers to teach students one more lesson before they walk out that door into the real world. And I'm aware that we live in the real world where money doesn't grow on trees. But to cut money from our education is unfair to students, teachers, or other staff members. This budget will lessen test scores, engagement in class, grades, and overall mental health of the student. Thank you.
Danica, fifty-one, She's Not Hill Road. I lived in East Hampton for thirty-eight years. My husband is retired. We raised a son who's gone through the political system, and I've taught in East Hampton for thirty-five years. As a taxpayer, what I know is you get what you pay for. I'd rather pay for services that address the needs of our community that have lower taxes, that, than have lower taxes. I'd rather pay. At a time coming off COVID, meeting the academic and social emotional needs of our students and youngest citizens is critical for their continued growth and well-being. We can't accomplish that by eliminating much-needed staff and resources. I respectfully request that you return the education budget to the Board of Finance to restore the budget and let voters decide what they want. I would also invite the town council and the Board of Finance to come into our schools to see teachers and students in action and how that work could be impacted by such a dramatic reduction in funding. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm William Faber, forty-five, Schoolhouse Lane. I had a speech, but I threw it out because there is no piece of paper that can tell me, who tell you the disappointments I feel as a member of your school system and a member of this community to come before you to tell you how disappointed I am in the fact that I must stand here today and tell you education matters. Ah. By doing this budget cut, you open the floodgates of any other board that comes after you and tells them that it's okay to put education in a secondary place behind other things, and that is completely unacceptable. There is a Confucius quote. Education breeds confidence. Confidence breeds hope, and hope breeds peace. Listen. There is, there are so many members of this community that have gathered here today that stand in solidarity with me and the students of my school to tell you to please, please reconsider this drastic and terrible change to our town and our community, not only for the next five years, but possibly for the next twenty. Therefore, I tell you that there is a very good saying that societies are based on the competence of their offspring. By your decision, where do you place us? Thank you very much.
My name is Daniel Quinn. I live at eighty-five, Cape Town Hill Road. Um, and I'm also a small business owner here in town, financial tech office center in town. And I have five children currently in the East Hampton Public School System. Most of the adults who've made a huge difference in my children's life are in this room as teachers um, who've been with my family through some very difficult times. The Board of Finance said that they wanted to send a message to legislature, but they don't. By doing this, all they do is they hurt children. They hurt my children. The, uh, I know that as a small business owner, when times are tough, when costs go up, the first thing you don't do is fire your people because everything's a big difference in your organization. People matter. Invest in the teachers. Invest in the teachers who invest in our students, who invest in our kids, who invest in my children. I also want to speak against the cut to the ambulance association. That association saved my daughter's life three years ago. And we need to fund them. Same thing's true for the police organization. Those first responders matter in a town with a larger geographic and spread out population as ours. Please reconsider that budget and send it back to the Board of Finance to restore those funding cuts. Uh, Board of Finance member stated that this was the largest increase in the budget in history. And that just happens to be how math works when you put inflation on top of other numbers. Um, but it is in fact a cut, given the fact that inflation last year was six and a half percent, and they're only approved three point nine percent increase. That's a cut to budget. That's a two and a half percent cut in just current fundings. That's not asking for actress. That's not asking for frills. That's a cut. And it matters to my children. It matters to the people who, who will come after my children in the system. People matter. And our town's education system is a fundamental priority of the voters in this room, obviously, uh, but also should be a fundamental priority of how we spend our money. Thank you.
Julie Pulis, eighteen, Glenwood Road. I am here tonight to ask you to send the education budget back to the Board of Finance. For those of you who feel that the schools have too much funding, please volunteer. Spend a day in the schools. For the past five years, I have served as a co-treasure on the elementary PTO. I continue to volunteer year after year to counteract the lack of funding and resources the school has. In my opinion, we support many items that should be in the budget but are not in the budget because the approved budget has never had everything it's needed. The idea of cutting $792,000 from the budget is unimaginable and will be detrimental. I also volunteer so the wonderful teachers feel supported and appreciated. They're doing an amazing job, and by doing so, they're supplementing their own time and their own personal resources. Shame on the Board of Finance member for suggesting otherwise. It angers me to see the lack of kindness and support in the town government. Cutting the education budget would result in giving up on our teachers, schools, and children. Thank you.
Sarah Perez, one-ten, Comstock Trail. I come here tonight as a parent of two kids in our schools and a concerned citizen. I understand that there, there's always not enough money. However, riding on the backs of our children and our teachers who sacrificed so much throughout the years is not the way to do it. During the pandemic, our teachers were our heroes. You could have put capes on them for all the work that they did. The teachers weren't just teaching. They were, you know, making sure that Johnny had his mask on, making sure that the tables were scrubbed down. They were doing custodial work and everything. And they did everything that was needed, and now they're being turned into villains. And we, you're looking to cut their jobs and to, to the detriment of our children. We can't do that. Our children deserve better. Having small class sizes is what our children need. Increasing the sizes of the elementary schools to twenty-four to twenty-six kids, you're going to set them back. The pandemic already did that. Our teachers are incredible, and you're sending a bad message to them that we don't value them. I understand that cuts need to be made, but not on their backs. I understand that cuts need to be made, but not on their backs. Additionally, I also want to speak in support of the police department. With the, with the laws that have passed at the state, it's made it easier for juvenile crime to go through the roof. We've seen it with cars being broken into night after night after night. I've seen it on my street. Several residents have said, you know, people are trying to break into our cars. The police can only handle so much. And when you're cutting staffing from the police department or the requests for staffing at the police department, you're tying the chief's back, hands behind his back. Please send both budgets back and let the voters decide. Thank you.
Good evening, Simple Stag Miletty on that thirty-sixth five Olive Drive. I hate public speaking, so I'm sorry in advance for my shaky voice. My family and I moved here just over a year ago. And I've never really been involved in politics before, but sometimes when things are glaring, it's hard to not stand up and say something, so I wanted to make sure that I stood up and spoke tonight. I have a son who's in kindergarten. I have a two-year-old who will be entering the school in a few years as well. I just wanna send appreciation to everyone who has the courage to stand up here because I know that that's not easy and for everyone that came tonight. When we moved from our previous town, it was not really a decision that I had wanted to make. I loved the last town that we lived in. And there were two things that really stood out to me about moving to a place like East Hampton. When we moved, there were a shortage of how this, I know some other folks might have felt that in the last couple of years, inventory was low. East Hampton was not my first choice, to be completely honest, and there were two reasons for that. One reason was to understand how education was funded in this town compared to some other towns that I was considering, as well as losing all of my wonderful neighbors that I had loved so much in my previous town. After having been here for a year, I can confidently say that my neighbors are wonderful, and I love this community. I would like to not regret my decision because we're using the budget, the education of our children, the way that we're funded. So with all that being said, I support the proposed reported education budget and I'd like for that to go back to the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Paul Surata, thirty-nine Core Road. First, I want to thank all the teachers that have taught my son and daughter Michael and Lily through the years. And, but I do want to say in this time of unprecedented government overspending, inflation that we're seeing in debt, I believe it's the people's duty to take charge and demand more fiscal responsibility while still affording employees fair wages and positions. Budget cuts aside from employees are imperative and absolutely expected. The burden not need to fall on those who show up to work every day. Suppliers, corporations, vendors, the top tier, selling overpriced goods, loaded contracts, need to be reined in. The members of this community and board supporting frivolous spending should be aware of the systemic corruption and illogical thought that continues to stress us. The middle class is shrinking. Our yearly cost of living raises no longer cover the increase of the cost of living. We keep falling farther and farther behind in debt, and at every turn, someone has their hand out asking for more. I know you've all seen it at the pump, at the grocery store, in the utilities, et cetera. Do the right thing and help families like mine make more money in their bank accounts so we can decide how to invest into our children's future. It is the family and not the government's duty to raise strong, respectable young men and women. I support the smallest increase to the Board of Education budget as is fiscally responsible line by line. Well, thank you.
Lisa Johnson, I have a raspy voice today, thirty-nine Skyline Drive. I feel the Board of Finance cutting a budget is because you are judging a book by its cover. Something you think you know about, but you really have no idea what is going on in the schools or seeing every day. I am a building substitute forty a week at Memorial with a third grader attending Memorial. In two thousand nineteen, my son was in kindergarten, and I only volunteered at the school. I only volunteered at the school. That year, I stepped into a room like this at the high school, asking to add more teachers and less learner counting. The following year, you guys made that happen, and everyone was so happy. Now, four years later, I've been working at the school, and now the Board of Finance wants to decrease the budget again and eliminate teachers. For me, it's different because working at the school, I now see what happens there every day. These wonderful, beautiful teachers trying to teach a classroom, are they normal days for them? Sure, they're normal for them, but they're normal is not your norm then. In my former job, I was a pharmaceutical representative. Before I started this job as a building staff, everyone asked me, why would you leave pharmaceuticals for a building staff that pays no money? At that point, the money meant nothing to me. I love Oreo. The truth is, my son, who is my priority, is a student at Memorial, and they need everyone, I'm saying the same. My son is my priority, and the school needs help, a lot of it. I mean, a lot. These teachers, psychologists, have a group of diverse kids. Most funny to learn, lots of emotional kids, disrespectful kids, curious kids with serious mental health issues that can, that can cut up to two hours out of any classroom. Teachers, learners are taking the brunt of it. Any teachers that could handle this are truly blessings to all of our kids' lives. To even think of increasing the number of young students in a class on top of the things they take on is absurd. So my question is, and I have for the board, is how do you feel content or sleep at night about cutting a budget when we're all hardly making it work with the budget we have now? That's it. Thank you.
My name is Augie R. I live in Eastern Bridge Road, and tonight I am a very proud member of the Board of Education, a member of the community and a father of a child currently in the school system. Please reject the budget and send it back to the Board of Finance with the following message. We currently have twelve point four students per certified teacher. Do not make a mistake. This is class sizes. This takes into account all teachers, special ed, art, music, PE, health, world languages, business, culinary, et cetera. The number is twelve percent higher than neighboring towns. We have a hundred and eighty-six students per administrator. This is twenty-five percent higher than neighboring towns. We have a hundred and thirty-eight students per counselor, social worker, and psychologist. This is approximately twelve percent higher than other schools, twenty-four percent higher than Portland. At a time when mental health needs are at an all-time high, we continue to support our kids with the leanest staffing area. Tell the Board of Finance member who said this reduction is to send a message to the state to join forces with our Board of Ed chair in taking that fight up with the state leaders. Do not take it out on our kids. Tell them that our teachers do do their jobs. Our math and reading scores are up, and to spend one day, just one full day in a classroom and dare again say, why aren't the teachers doing their jobs? Our teachers are always, our teachers always go above and beyond doing their jobs. The Board of Finance continually asks, why does the Board of Ed always target teachers when it comes to these types of cuts? The Board of Ed has not targeted teachers. The Board of Finance has. They say, why not custodial, office assistants, cafeteria workers, or an administrator? Any personnel cuts are just that. They're personal. They are all equal, as it takes a village to raise our child. And right now, we have one heck of a village. Do not let that slip away. Last November, we were given next year's town council budget policy statement. A couple of points. Cap your wants to one to two percent. Board of Ed's budget, zero. Support and maintain ongoing programs. Board of Ed's budget is only to maintain what we have. The budget has zero wants, and I'm here trying to get four of you to help lessen this blow. Please do not let anyone argue that seven hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar reduction is not a cut because there is actually a dollar amount increase from last year's budget. Our proposed request is this year's budget at next year's prices. So anything less than what was asked will result in some form of cuts. As much as I would love to ask you to put all the money back, I understand that isn't realistic. But please do not agree with what they did. If you don't restore all, please restore some. You can save jobs. I also asked that the referendum ballot have three choices for the town and BOE budgets. A box for yes, a box for no because it's too low, and a box for no because it's too high. If you truly want transparency and want the voters to decide, this is the only fair way to do so.
Good evening, Michael Buck, Valley Drive, also a proud member of the Board of Ed. Augie already went over the town council statement on the budget that I feel the Board of Ed greatly met and surpassed. You know, I want to let you guys know that some people here tonight seem angry. And I've always looked at anger as not a feeling, but a result of those feelings, and these people are sad. We're all sad. You know, we need to stop looking at decisions as Republicans or Democrats. You start looking at them as right or wrong. And, you know, people in this room tonight, counselor of all different political affiliations and backgrounds, you know, we're all here because we see the reckless decision made by the Board of Finance was, it was just plain wrong. You know, post-pandemic, people have mentioned these things, these kids need this support now. And that's why we presented that budget the way it was presented. Cutting teachers and making larger class sizes doesn't lend to kids getting increased help with coping skills, interpersonal communication skills, social emotional skills. You know, I've spoken a lot on safety in schools, and it's near and dear to my heart as a, as a first responder and as a secondary responder to the Sandy Hook tragedy. If you if you increase class sizes, you're going to lessen the chance that teachers can identify a child in a mental health crisis. The child in mental health crisis can attribute to school violence. That's on one side, and on the other side, people have spoken in defense of the PD, and so am I. Because now we're creating an environment in which school violence can be more prevalent. They're also affecting the PD who's gotta respond to it. It's a, it's a double-edged sword. This is the same PD, by the way, who in recent years arrested a juvenile. It's in the news that was making ghost guns. He had issues in school making ghost guns in our town. And the same PD that's going to increase in mental health policy service at our schools. I'm especially confused because as a Republican, I'm, I'm pro-law and order and safety, so that's just confusing to me. We're, we're losing people. You're losing people. You can't mess with people's kids. That's a fact. I have a sneaking suspicion some will say, you know, we don't have to cut teachers even though the board has been transparent and honest in telling you there's no other palatable options. I've heard it said cuts can be made by the Board of Finance and Town Council without recommending where they come from. Well, that's not unified government. That's a slap in the face to the countless hours the board presented. The board reviewed the budget and presented it honestly. It's childish. It's one of the biggest reasons almost every one of your members under fifty resigned. Thank you.
Bob Hine, nineteen University Road. In two thousand and twelve April, I resigned from, retired from a forty-plus-year career in manufacturing in September of two thousand and twelve. I started a new career here in East Hampton as a substitute school teacher, mainly at the high school and a bit at the middle school. And then that career was, which I'm doing even today, today I sub. The career has been exasperating, exciting, and rewarding. And for a paid ad for everybody, if any of you have a free time during the day and want to pay a few extra bucks.
Excuse me, keep your thumbs to the chair, please. Come on, the audience.
Anyway. Now we're down to a budget that I think is totally unacceptable. I served two years on the Board of Finance, and I know the pressure the Board of Finance is on, under to to keep taxes low and services high. Just a, a chance to try to lower taxes as much as possible. It will do a damaging job on the education. AP courses, advanced listening courses, UConn courses are, will be. Some of them will have to be eliminated with loss of an English teacher. It's a bit of a slap in the face to the kids. Remember, the students that we're trying to teach are the siege corn for our society. They're the future doctors, lawyers, legislators, councilmen. We want them educated, smart, and committed. And, and education, do that is expensive. It's expensive because we're using qualified people, highly educated people to do this job. People that think we can just cut seven hundred thousand dollars and not do damage to the teaching profession are either fooling themselves or trying to fool us. It is my thought that this budget should be sent back to the Board of Finance where hopefully, and I really say hopefully, would increase it back to a higher level. Do I, would I expect the whole seven hundred and ninety thousand to get put back in the budget? No. But we can do a lot better than cutting the seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This money is well spent. I'll be the first to admit, when I get my tax bill from the town, I drink my tea and go, ah, there's another five or six thousand dollars in my pocket. One plus vacation I can take. New car I won't buy, but that is my fair share of paying the government expenses for this town, we live in this society, and we should all be willing to make that sacrifice for ourselves and our future kids.
Hello, my name is Jared Anders, and I'm a sophomore at East Hampton High School. Originally coming here today, I did not intend to speak, but after hearing the voices of the people in our town, I decided that I need to say something. When I first heard of the budget cuts, I believed that they would be taken from clubs and other areas around the school to account for the rampant inflation that we have heard during this year due to the result of coronavirus. However, once I realized that the cuts amounted nearly eight hundred thousand dollars and even had the audacity to cut teachers from our school, I can assure you, I was angry. However, I was not the only one. When the news reached the students that they would be wanting, losing one of the greatest teachers, I have had the pleasure of knowing the feeling of, well, rage was unimaginable. How dare the Board of Finance in its try to take away our valued educators? Can they just stand for what? Unfunded mandates? What message does that send? When we don't get what we want, we take away from the children who need funding the most? My generation, our future, needs a sufficient budget so our educators can teach us that when budgets do need to be cut, they aren't taken away from the people responsible for our future. Send this budget back to the Board of Finance so that we can get the funding our generation needs. Thank you.
Angelus Tomero, twenty-five Lake Boulevard. I'm here because my abusive wife who's a pair of special shopping. I'm actually here to say I support the Board of Education cuts. Just kidding again. I say that jokingly because that's something that you guys have not heard tonight. One person spoke up saying they supported that. Another one, but also some statistical facts. Well, let me tell you something. Facts do not care about feelings. I'm gonna give you some facts right here, right now. First of all, I commend you guys for what you're doing. I realize this is not in popularity contest. I think you've had a lot of anger and misdirected towards you when it should be directed at the Board of Finance. And so here's where I'm gonna leave you there. What's the risk?
It's not on your hands right now. What's the risk of just sending it back to the Board of Finance? And let them actually put some time and thought into this budget and get it off your hands. You don't want what's going to happen if this budget goes forward and gets approved on your hands. So all I want to do is say, what's the risk? Send it back.
My name is Nancy Kohler. I live thirty-one Daniel Street. I am a member of the Board of Education and a parent of two children in this school district. I'm here to pose a few questions to you this evening. First, I would like to publicly state my outrage that the performance of our teachers is being called into question. My first question goes not just to the Board of Finance member who raised this issue, but to each and every one of you who is making a decision regarding the education budget. Can you tell me what a teacher's job entails? Can you name five specific things that a teacher is asked to do each day? Then can you name five more? And how about five more after that? Because I'm quite certain that the list of things that teachers are required to do every day goes well into the hundreds. And this doesn't include the countless things they do that they aren't required to do, but they just do anyway. To all of you who are making decisions about the fate of our educators and our children, when was the last time you visited our school? Attended an athletic event, a concert, a drama club production? More importantly, have you ever volunteered your time or your services or asked a teacher about the challenges they faced? Of the at least half dozen meetings where the Board of Education budget was discussed in depth, how many did you attend? Because until you have a better understanding of what goes into our schools every day, can you really make informed decisions about what we can afford to lose or make sound judgment about what our teachers are doing? I'm quite certain the answer is no, but I would be interested to hear your answer. I'd also like to address the budget cut statement. It was approved by you, the members of the Town Council in November, and it states that the budget should quote incorporate all contractual needs as a starting point of zero based top-down approach with a cap of one to two percent increase of wants justified. The policy statement goes on to say that the budget should make every effort to only limit increases to meet contractual obligations. The Board of Education budget follows these guidelines. The next bullet in the policy states that the budget should quote support and maintain ongoing programs. Later guidelines include quote maintaining and enhancing school district accreditation and enhancing the quality and competitiveness of our students. You, the Town Council, approve these policy guidelines. Again, can you explain how the proposed cuts, which will require the elimination of both staff and programming, maintain or enhance anything? Similarly, the policy states that quote the council for its part will ensure our public libraries, social services, and programs for seniors are adequately funded, as well as quote provide continued support for public safety services. Do the cuts to the senior center and the police department reflect these insurances made by the council? The policy states that the budget shall include funding to enhance economic development and grandlist growth consistent with the character of this town. How do we expect to draw new families and grow a grandlist in a town where education is not guaranteed value? The guidelines in the policy state that the policy should quote include taxpayers in the budget process. Wouldn't the simplest way to do this be to allow the taxpayers to vote on the budget as proposed and decide for themselves what they are willing and able to pay for? You approve these guidelines in this year's budget. Will you now return the budget to the Board of Finance and insist that they follow them? Does this document mean anything versus just for show? Our community deserves better.
Hello, I'm Angela Colville. I live on twenty-five Whiteford Road and I'm a sophomore at East Hampton High School. I'll be real with you. I'm not here to give you facts. I'm here to fight for my teacher. There were student speakers before me, and you might have heard that mention one teacher in particular. She's in this room with us today and she knows who she is. There's a reason she has been brought up so much. That teacher is my trusted adult and her job is on the line. I understand that I come from a place of bias, of simply not wanting to lose my teacher. But I am not a special case. I am a prime example of how we as students are affected by the loss of our teachers in the middle school, high school, and elementary school. I'm gonna keep this short, but please hear me when I say we need our teachers. Thank you.
I'm Kevin Zuber, twenty-three Rock Road. From the dirt on my boots and pants to the dirt that's still stuck on my face from work, I'm not the type of kid that you'd see at the four bed meeting. But the fact is eight hundred thousand dollars out of a budget that was already non-existent, as is, is just outrageous. And it's getting rid of one of the teachers that is, I can have full heard of these say, the reason I passed English two years. That is all.
Hi, I'm Trey Frost. This is through Whiteford Road. Uh, so I've lived in town since two thousand. I taught for eighteen years in town. I coached at every level. Currently coach of uh high school soccer. So I've seen, uh, I have a unique perspective, I think, on the children of town. I've seen it in the classroom, outside the classroom. Uh, and this is absolutely terrifying. I'd rather speak to a room full of kids. So I'm here today to voice my strong support uh toward the uh education budget. As we all know, education is the foundation of a thriving community. Our schools are not just places where students learn how to read, write, and do math. They're also centers of innovation, creativity, and social growth. Investing in education is investment in our future. By providing our students with the resources and support they need to succeed, we're ensuring that they will have the skills and knowledge necessary to become the leaders, entrepreneurs, and problem solvers of tomorrow. Education promotes socially quality and justice, providing opportunities for all members of our community to reach their full potential. In short, the education budget is not just a line item on a spreadsheet. It's a crucial investment in the future of our town. I urge you to support it fully and to send it back to the Board of uh Finance. On a personal note, so I have a daughter who suffered crippling anxiety uh several years ago to the point where she missed about two and a half years of of school. And if it wasn't for school psychologists, administrators, the teachers, uh especially at the middle school, um, she would not be where she is today, being able to act in plays and excelling academically. Um, if this kind of cut happened at that time, it may very well have been a different outcome, a more severe outcome for my daughter. So as a parent, uh, there's nothing I value more than the foster uh parents, grandparents, who are the teachers in the system. Uh, we wear many hats throughout a day, whether it be a nurse, a social worker, psychologist, a grandparent, a parent, a friend, a confidant. We do it all. Most of you get to do one job every day. We do ten, twelve, fifteen jobs every day concurrently. One of the biggest issues uh that is going on is having non-educators make decisions that affect those of us who are on the front line every day. I do hope that the day will come when we as teachers will actually be treated as the professionals we are. With all that being said, ultimately, it's not about you or me, it's about the children in the town. To quote Dr. King, the time is always right to do what is right. So this is your opportunity to have the courage, to show courage, and do what is right by sending this back to the Board of Finance. Please send this budget back.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? My name's Eric O'Connor. I'm living on Hyde Farm Terrace. I've been here for six years. I have three kids, two in the school system, one coming through. I wasn't sure I was gonna speak tonight, but there's uh something I sort of want to echo coming from my background. So first, I want to show my support for the Board of Education's budget, and I do want you guys to seriously consider sending this back to the Board of Finance. That's the uh first message. Um, and there've been several valid arguments for doing that tonight, and I um would like to echo a couple of them. Uh, over the past three years, I've had the privilege of working in the medical field, and I have worked um as a primary care and psychiatric nurse practitioner. Um, so I have treated a lot of people, adults and children um through COVID, and I've seen not only the medical ailments that we have been treating, but also the uh um, all the mental health issues that we um are still facing. Um, and it's it's significant, and I think it may be more significant than you may imagine if you're not seeing it every day. Um, and I know that our teachers are our teachers, but they're also our mental health professionals, so thank you for having eyes and ears on all our kids. I've seen the children struggle academically, emotionally, and socially as a result of quarantines, social isolation, mask mandates, and the fear of the unknown. And although the landscape of the pandemic has changed, this quality can still be seen. We can't change the course of the last two or three years, but we can change how we respond to it today. I think if we cut the budget, things will get worse instead of better. We're at a critical moment in our history coming off this pandemic, and you'll see significant changes in the children if they don't have the support that they need. I have seen it. I've seen it in other school districts. Please support the teachers, the psychologists, the nurses, who support our children. And I just want to say a big thank you to all the teachers who have supported my children over the years. They are doing a fantastic job, and I appreciate all their work. Thank you.
I cannot imagine how hard you all work. But I would like to point out, you are working this hard. You are sitting here today because you got to call quality education. So don't take that opportunity away from all the students. Thank you.
Abby Miller, twenty-seven Fairmont Drive. Um, I came here and I actually had no plan speaking tonight, and for me, this is so good. Thank you so much for listening. Hi, my name is Abby Nassau. I'm on South Main East Hampton High School. Because of the budget cut, several key positions throughout our district are in jeopardy. One is my English teacher. I had her for the past two years, and they have been the best two years of my life. For example, she's very understanding to my personal needs. I have anxiety, and she's able to give me all the support that I need. She makes sure every environment is a safe environment for students, which is extremely important in schools, especially today after the pandemic. She's able to build trusted relationships with every student in our school, which is what you've heard from pretty much every other student has spoken. And finally, she makes every day fun no matter the circumstance. I just want to say thank you to the teacher who has made such a huge impact in my life, and I don't know how to do it without you. Thank you so much for this thing. I think we can consider the budget.
Heard a lot about the vote for the finance. And I just want everybody to know that when those cuts were made in the Board of Finance, the vote was not unanimous. That's my message.
Salvatore, Salvatore Sephora, one four seven Winchester Avenue, a member of the Board of Education. So directly my direct my speech to the chair, I don't want to be gavelled down. As it is known, yesterday, well, the reason why everyone is here is because the uh superintendent gathered up the troops to storm the castle this week, when in reality, they should have stormed yesterday's meeting. Yesterday's meeting was where the Board of Education had the opportunity to deny, uh sorry, deny putting any teachers on the chopping block, and I was the sole vote against doing so. Everyone else, including the members that came up here and spoke, voted in favor of putting the teachers on the chopping block despite their uh the crying and the the woe is me, woe is it, how about the Board of Educat, oh, the Board of Finance did to us, we're forced to do these cuts. No. Recently, Mr. Chair, the Board of Education is behind by almost five hundred thousand dollars. Okay, but teachers are being paid, custodians are being paid, education is happening, and we are on track to uh reach pre-pandemic education levels, which is fantastic. But we are doing so behind the budget, but with a budget that's we're over a budget by five hundred thousand. We're gonna have a meeting in a couple of months to clear that up. So since we can do it once, we can do it again. I don't care if you guys cut two million dollars to your budget. As far as I'm concerned, I'm voting against any cuts to any teachers. And as far as um uh administrators and custodians and the like, unfortunately, we were not presented any anything that shows that I teachers are covered. I've seen it all. I know that they're doing a wonderful job, and I I'm not in favor of any cuts, including hiring back replacements for the two teachers that retired. Um, however, for everyone else, but for the um custodians and perhaps um administrative assistants and stuff, I did ask Paul, and he said he is to provide a separate budget that is not going to have cuts on it for teachers because I wanted to see how much consolidation he can show us. And if he's if he's if sat if he satisfies me that he's done the best he could, then um, I'm not making it, and I'm in favor of any cuts at all, and we're gonna have to go back next year. Do we're gonna do this year and ask for three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars, and we're gonna fill the room like this, and we're gonna have a vote like we did when we bought the six hundred thousand dollar fire truck, and we went and got the A S Os, the security officers, we did that at a special meeting. We can do it again next year like we're gonna do this year in a couple of months. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, community volunteers. Sorry, I'm short. My name is Christina Tomaro-Zagan. I live on South Main Street and I'm the Board of Ed Chairperson. I would like to remind the Town Council that no one is allowed to speak on behalf of the Board except for Chairperson. So anyone who spoke as a member of the Board spoke as an individual prior to me. Um, I would like to inform Town Council that the decision last night and the vote last night was not because we want to see teachers removed. It's because we have a legal obligation to hand out slips before May first unless we need to have a termination hearing. So I just want to educate everyone on the misinformation that was just provided to you. I learned a lot over the past few years on this board. Myself and other members have certainly put in a massive amount of effort to learn everything we possibly can about the very complex education budget. But beyond that, I've learned so much about the history of politics and boards and board relationships in this town. Something I've heard over and over again is that the board always threatens teachers as if it's a game of chicken. This apparently is something that has happened over and over again in this town, despite who the superintendent is, despite the council makeup, despite the Board of Ed makeup. Historically, this has happened. That's one thing I learned from everyone who has given me any information when I have sought that information out. Well, if the board always does this, when you ask for a no wants budget, you get a no wants budget, but still make drastic cuts, and it always results in teachers, regardless of the superintendent of schools, regardless of the board makeup, maybe it's not us. Maybe it's you. Thank you.
Ava, I'm forty-one, in East Hampton. Uh, my family moved here uh for a variety of reasons. We love this town. Um, the school system was definitely a big part of it. Um, I have a ten-year-old at Center School, and I have a toddler who will be entering kindergarten just in a couple of years. Um, and I just, I really want to uh say that when I hear things like, don't worry, the teachers are covered. Um, and and you know, it it's all, it's all good. Like, it's not all good. The the children that we have in our school systems right now are not the same children that were in our school systems before COVID happened. They're not. And I can tell you that I was the lead A D therapist in a public school system for eight years, and I was there prior to COVID. I was there through COVID, um, and I was there after COVID, and I ended up leaving because of situations like the one before us where there are budget cuts and budget cuts and budget cuts, and resources are dwindling, and the needs of and resources are dwindling, and the needs of the children are so high. And I felt like if I can't do my job, and I don't have the resources to be able to give my children what they need, then I can't do this anymore, and I left the education system. And I don't want that for any of our educators here, because they are amazing, and they are rock stars. And, and I really hope that you take that into consideration and send the budget back. Thank you.
Raise your hand to see.
Marlene? Marlene?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Marlene.
Okay, go ahead. All right, thank you. All right. Um, my name is Marlene Geary, and I am at thirty-eight Wangong Trail, and I don't have kids in the system, and I, school system, and I don't work in town, but my family has been in East Hampton for three generations, and I am a taxpayer. And as a voter, I have a vested interest in our town's policies being carried out in a consistent and ethical way by all of its boards and commissions. And to me, it's really very simple. Our town charter in section two point four says, each year, the council shall submit to the Board of Finance a policy statement outlining its annual budget goals and objectives for the ensuing fiscal year. And so we have a town budget policy approved by this standing town council, the council that is before all of us tonight. And let me just talk about just a few of the specific guidelines from the town council that were completely ignored by the Board of Finance, and they warrant a rejection of this budget. First, incorporate all contractual needs as the starting point of a zero-based top-down approach with a cap of one to two percent increase of wants and needs. That's what the Board of Education submitted to the Board of Finance, and the Board of Finance rejected. Second, support and maintain ongoing programs. Now, the cuts made by the Board of Finance do not support and maintain ongoing programs, neither for the education system, nor the police, nor the ambulance association. And third, the budgets presented should reflect projected available revenue, anticipated state funding shortfalls, and potential impact of current economic conditions. Well, the Board of Finance publicly stated they were rejecting state funding shortfalls and blatantly ignored recent inflation increases. Fourth, enhance the quality and competitiveness competitiveness of our students. Well, you've heard here today how the Board of Finance has both cut teachers and staff and increased class sizes. That's the net effect, which does the opposite of increasing quality, education quality and competitiveness. And fifth, the, the budget shall include funding to enhance economic development and grand list growth consistent with the character of the town. How is it that the Board of Finance thinks we are going to see economic development when they are reducing town services and decreasing the quality of education? That's something that brings new residents into town and, and, and won't. You know, it, it's the opposite of economic development. Once again, the Board of Finance did not adhere to the town council's budget policy statement for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And that's why the town council needs to take a vote on this budget, reject it, and send it back to the Board of Finance for a budget that adheres to this town council's public policy. Thank you.
Billy?
William Anderman, thirty-seven Royal Lokes Avenue. I speak to you, uh, I speak to you today in intense opposition to the proposed cuts to the education in town budgets. We need our teachers. They mean everything to us students. The state has made decisions that do not ta- take into consideration municipalities affected by their mandates, but simply cutting the education budget by almost eight hundred thousand dollars to send a message to the state is not a way to respond to things that you don't like. And to the Board of Finance member who's had the guts to say that teachers aren't doing their jobs, I have two dates that you should put on your calendar. Either November seventh, twenty twenty-three, or November fourth, twenty twenty-five, depending on your terms expiration. Police spending has also been cut. A few years ago, my parents' car was stolen by juveniles, and that continues to occur today to East Hampton residents. Now, not supporting the police will only make it worse. I hope you send the education in ten town budgets back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration. Thank you.
All we have, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your public remarks. We'll move on to item five, presentations we haven't done tonight. Six, no bids or contracts, seven resolution orders, policies, proclamations, adoption of the fair housing resolution. Good, David, you staying in some of these, okay?
Uh, this is an annual proclamation that gets done by the town. It really renews the annual, annually, the commitment that the town has uh, to ensuring that it will do its part to, uh, provide, uh, housing opportunities across the spectrum, uh, in the community. So uh, in compliance with various policies and regulations that are in place.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept this as proposed.
I have a motion. We have a second. A motion and a second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, David. Continue, continue busy. Any, who, continued business? Any subcommittee reports tonight?
I would like to, uh, just briefly review the public of the middle school roof committee did meet today uh, with the administration. We met with the Department of Administrative Services, and we're in the process of reviewing the very extensive plans for replacing the roof at the East Hampton Middle School.
I thank Kevin. I like, well, I've got your attention. You were on the original, um, fields committee up at the high school whenever we do on the ball fields and tennis courts.
Yes.
My understanding is a huge crackdown in the center of the tennis courts. What's being done about that? Do you know anything about it?
We, we met briefly about a week ago.
Okay.
And, uh, the contractor and a consultant are looking at the issue to determine how best we can address that.
Okay. David, you have that on the agenda for next month. Remind me that we need the answer of what's going on with that, where we gotta go with that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other meeting reports, please?
Just Mark, that is, the Warren meeting is gonna need tomorrow. We have nothing brought to this as of yet.
Thank you. Item nine, discussion possible action of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four general government, Board of Education budgets and capital plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would, uh, like to make a motion to send the general government capital plan and Board of Education budgets back to the Board of Finance for the press concerns, wishes, and to request that the town council's budget statement, policy statement be considered by the Board of Finance.
Second, because I have a motion and a second, now it's time for discussion. Well, I will be voting against that because I don't think you've given us fair time to put what we feel into the budget and our recommendations back to the Board of Finance if we decide to send it back, and I have, we haven't made that decision yet. And to just send it back without us reviewing it and have them look at it is not fair and basically a miss on our jobs. But we do have a vote, and we do have a second. So I will call the vote. All those in favor, seventy-five, seventy-nine.
I, I
There's a discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, right?
Um. I think we've had input from the community.
Not from us.
I think we've had, I think that, but from the community, which are our bosses. They put us here. I think we can respect their wishes above our own. And, and I think the community has spoken.
Mr. Chairman? I received many calls. I received many text messages. I received many emails. And we all have received many letters. I have sat on this town council for ten years, and I have never seen this many people looking at me at, uh, at a town council meeting. I respect the fact that they're here. I appreciated the fact that they shared their ideas. And I also appreciate the fact that my friends on the Board of Finance are sitting here tonight and listening to all the comments that have been shared. There's no question in my mind that the Board of Finance should reflect on this budget one more time. I understand the two hundred thousand dollar cut regarding insurance. That's a no-brainer. But the additional five hundred and eighty some odd thousand dollars really needs serious consideration. I was a teacher for ten years. I was an assistant superintendent for thirty-one years, all in East Hampton. And I'm very proud to say that many of the teachers who spoke tonight, I had the pleasure of working with. This community has been very good to the Wright family. I want this budget to go back so that the Board of Finance can sneak a peek and appreciate everything that's been said and look at that budget one more time. And I expect if it goes back that when the Board of Finance is sitting here, they're gonna be looking at two hundred pairs of eyes, just like I'm looking at them right now.
Fairmont. Followed it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Go for the kids.
So easy. Now I have these out first.
Item, yes, sir. Are we still able to ask any questions that we had on the budget that we?
No, because we had just had a vote, and because now, because of the vote, we cannot discuss it because the item is dead. It would've been nice to have some discussion, but like other members wanted to do a vote immediately, so that kind of kills our chance to have any sort of discussion. Item D, discussion and possible actions. Prevention survey. Is the prevention coordinator here?
Yeah, she is. I'll ask Courtney to come up and talk with you about the survey, uh, for the prevention partnership.
You're a coward.
All right. Hi, guys. Um, I'm Courtney Woodruff. I'm the prevention coordinator here on our town. I work under the D S C grant, which stands for Direct Freedom Communities, that issued to us, um, through the P D C. Um, every two years, under that grant, we have to do a survey, um, or, or do for a survey. The last time we did it was in the spring of twenty twenty-one. So, um, I believe you've all received a copy of the survey, so we're just looking, um, to see if you had any questions on it, um, or concerns, or anything like that.
You're good.
Is it imperative that a student, uh, complete the survey?
Uh, yeah, so it is a requirement of the grant. Um, it does look good to the grant, the more students that, um, complete the survey. It is optional for the students to complete this, um, the survey. They can opt out. But again, it's gonna look good, and most of the students of the school are completing the survey.
And the parents are aware of the survey?
Yes, they already, they already received a copy, um, from the admin at the school, um, through Parentsware or whatever portal they use, uh, kind of communicating. Well, I believe it's Parentsware, um, that they sent information out.
So you did that two years ago, the survey went out?
Yeah, and I wasn't hired yet. I was, it was right after, um, or right before I was hired, they sent it out. Um, and they used, uh, Search Institute. This year, we're going with a more um, informal survey, just because it's a lot cheaper. So we're using, um, Survey Monkey, um, and I have a, uh, uh, I don't know, I shouldn't have like an exact title, but she's like my grant specialist for data. Um, and she is kind of going through the data after we receive it, and that's really not my expertise, so keep writing it out.
I guess my question where I'm getting is, do you have any information as to the last time it was sent out? How many sent out, and actually, how many did you get back?
Yeah, so it was sent out in the spring of twenty twenty-one, and it was sent out to the high school and the middle school. I couldn't tell you how many students had completed it exactly, but I believe they did it during their X blocks, and it was a lot. Most of the students completed it. I could give you the, the, it's posted on the website, the non-website.
Okay, I'm just
Yeah.
So now, I'm just trying to, so you have some kind of basis where there's, uh, gonna be a success, and how many you get back?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
And they, they take it in school, they take it on the computer or on the paper?
They take it on the computer.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the East Hampton Prevention Partnership twenty twenty-three use survey.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. See, discussion, possible action regarding participation in the regional housing committee. Mr. Cox?
Next item you have in front of you is, uh, consideration of, uh, the town's participation in the regional housing committee. Um, you'll all recall that earlier this year, we, uh, the town, uh, participated with the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments uh, in the development of the regional housing plan, uh, which has an appendix or an annex, if you will, uh, that serves as the town of East Hampton's housing plan. Out of that regional plan, uh, rose this concept of having a voluntary uh, a grouping of the municipalities in the C O G to continue to focus on and advance housing issues at a regional level. Uh, and to really, um, uh, provide for a unified approach, uh, provide for unified messaging, should there be an appropriate message that needs to be sent either to Hartford or elsewhere uh, about housing, uh, on a regional basis. So, uh, East Hampton is one of the only other municipalities yet to decide whether we're gonna participate uh, in this with the other sixteen members of the C O G. The, earlier in the month, the Planning and zoning commission reviewed it and did recommend that the town participate in the same way that we do in the regional planning.
Hey, it's your pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that we participate in the regional housing.
So making a motion to approve the resolution. So, or anyone approve the resolution, what you want there. Okay, we have a second on that. Motion and a second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Uh, do you have any reaction on how you want to handle the appointment of the member? Would you like to do that, or would you like the planning commission to do that? They appoint the member to the regional planning committee?
I would likely leave this in the hands of the planning and the commission. Okay?
If that's the voice of the council, go ahead and do that.
While you're up there, town manager's porch, could you?
Uh, the interest of the hour of the evening and, uh, upcoming public comment, I suspect. Uh, if there are questions, I'll certainly answer them, but otherwise, I'll remind everyone that my written town manager report is on the, uh, town's website. Uh, I will, however, take one moment to, uh, touch on one item that is in the town manager report. Courtney is still here. Uh, Courtney Woodruff has decided to move to a better opportunity uh, for prevention partnership. So that was one of the items that was listed in the, in the prevention report. I just want to thank her publicly uh, for the services she did give us over the time with the town. Uh, I think we continue to do good work in the prevention partnership, and I look forward to, uh, it continuing after she goes and to whatever support she can give us from up there.
Appointments we haven't done tonight, item twelve, tax refunds.
I would like to make a motion to approve the tax refund of two hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty pounds.
Second.
A motion and a second and discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. Back to public remarks. Same applies. Please come up to the mic. Keep your comments three minutes.
Erin, one at thirty-five, one across the road. I am extremely desulted, as I'm sure many parents are become right now. And I would just like to thank you for solidifying my decision to send my child to a prep school. Now that she's enrolled, I have the option of sending my other two children to that school as well. Now that she's enrolled, I have the option of sending my other two children to that school as well. So you can send the tax dollars that you are paying that previously would have funded my child being here to the Greater Hartford Academy of Arts. Thank you.
Brian Corbo, 42 Sunrise Lane. Moved to town in 2018. We had 168 other towns to pick from. We picked here. Part of it was because it was a nice small town. Another part is education. There's more to governing than just slashing budgets. You can get an ape with a red pen to slash a budget. Nice things cost more, you know, and just to echo everything that I, before going to law school, I taught in a school. Bought some very fancy prep school. The teachers that you've heard from, the quality of education here matches what people pay $50,000, $60,000 a year to send their kids to. Small class sizes, excellent educators. My daughter has excelled here. And she wouldn't be doing that in a bigger class size. Ambulance, police service. It's part of governing. You guys want to, guys want to govern? You want to sit behind here, you know, whatever, play around with Robert's rules of order, grow a spine and govern. You know, it's, there's more to governing than saying, I made your taxes, buddy. There's more to the value of this town than just saying we got a low millage. So, you know, I don't know what to say. Grow up, grow a spine and govern. You know what the right thing to do is do it.
Michael Buck, Valley Drive, Board of Ed member. I have never seen anything like this. I mean, it was made clear to this council tonight that that budget met the parameters set forth in your, in, in your goals. And you want to review it? We've had all the workshops. There's been plenty of time to review it. This was pure cowardice on every, every one of you that raised your hand tonight and were scared by a bully. Every one of you, and we're scared of the bully.
You talked for the right thing tonight, and that will be remembered in November and well into the future.
Out of our prepared drive, I just want to say you guys are doing a complete disservice to your town and the kids of this town. You lost my vote and probably every single person in this room.
Adam Doogie, 64 Barton Hill. I barely expected to speak once tonight. I'm up here a second time. I'd like to thank Mr. Brown, Mr. Wright for standing up and saying you both sent it back. It was pretty clear just based on the discussion that you guys already had in your mind, what you were going to vote on without even listening to what everybody had to say here. Everybody came up here and stood up, made their peace, came, took time off of work, waited for their kids, whatever they had to do to be here to speak up with you guys. And it's, it's clear cut that there wasn't even any discussion. There was no point in order. There was no discussion. The discussion was, I have to vote on this. What a line of shit. And I got to tell you right now that this is absolute disappointment. Thank you to the people that voted to send this back to the rest of you. Good luck voting.
Not for a mojo, Monty Summit Street. I moved here from a very nice town in Ledger, pub Ledger. And I was very surprised at the quality of services that are offered in this town, very comparable to the town that I came from, which I love dearly. And my mother was an educator. She started off as a home economics teacher. She finished as a school counselor, and now she has a second career as a oh gosh. She supports children as a surrogate parent in the school system. So I've seen what it takes for teachers to go into the school every single day. I've been affected by teachers being laid off. As the child of a teacher being laid off, I'm affected by that. I am also a Facebook friend of my high school English teacher because they were the person that I needed most in high school. They were the person that I needed most to get my ass out of bed and to get into school every day. If they weren't there, I wouldn't be here right now. Because that's how severe my life was back in the 90s. And we've come a long way. And before I had children, I was expecting to be a homeschooler. And then I moved here. And I saw the quality of education that you guys provide. And I said, you know what? I'm not doing that great as myself. I want to work myself. So why don't I let the teachers do their jobs? And I do mine. You guys, with the exception of one person, did not do your jobs today. Thank you for helping. Two people did not do their jobs today, and that is disappointing. And you will see that in the numbers. Those numbers come November. Thank you.
Matt Engelhardt, 27 Bedden Boulevard. I want to commend and encourage that all the teachers and all the students, everybody, hold your heart up at this conference tonight, this place. And I want to be 100% clear that all of you essentially just spat in their face. What went down tonight and under the guise of, well, you didn't give us a chance to speak about this, I guess we'll just have to vote in board. That was an act of cowardice, Mr. Bill Howard. This budget, if you send it to a referendum, it is going to fail. It's going to fail again and again and again. And I can tell you, I've heard the excuse many times that a failed referendum is a sign that you need to cut the budget more. Do not be mistaken. That is not the message we are sending tonight. You did the wrong thing, and many people are going to get hurt. Thank you to everybody who spoke tonight. Have a good night.
Principal Plenary, again, 8 Plenary Row, teacher and parent of two. Spending three hours here away from my children, away from my grading, away from my planning to support my students and my colleagues. I am, I'm very rarely speechless. Very rarely. The least you can do moving forward is make sure on that referendum voting ballot that there is yes and there's no too low and there's no too high. Because referendums cost money, and if you're all in the interest of saving money, you need to make sure that you have a very clear, clear message from the people in this town. I'm unfathomably disappointed.
I am Maggie Bowman. I'm at 23 Old Stowe Street. I was not expecting to speak tonight. I am not into politics. I've never paid attention to any of the board meetings. I've never really cared much about board meetings. But when I heard about the cuts that were going to be made, I knew I had to come and I had to see for myself. I have never paid attention because I've always respected you and trusted you as my elders, as my superiors. And I want you to know that most of you tonight have lost my trust and my respect. I expected you to protect my community, my schools, and my peers' education, and you have failed me. I am able to vote soon, and I will be voting. I wish you all the best of luck.
Matthew Garcia, Hog Hill Road. I am speaking now at the end of this meeting because I feel compelled to speak. Having sat here and watched this panel for the last several hours. These are not the enemy out here. The people here tonight and the students here tonight came out because they feel passionately about decisions that are being made that affect their future. And I have sat here and watched several of you tonight dismiss them with your, with your stares, your dismissive attitude. And at least one of you almost accidentally voted to send this back when there was some confusion as to whether or not you were said to get back. And you put your hand down out of cowardice instead of holding to your vote. So what are we doing? We still have a vote, and we will be using our voices to vote. This is unfathomable, as has been mentioned. But what's more discouraging is the way that several of you have treated the very people in this room as if they are the enemy, and they are not. They want what's best for their children. And you failed to do that tonight, and we still have a voice to speak. Thank you.
Tony Sands in King County Lane. As of now, it's very disappointing. You had a room full of passionate educators, parents, children, speaking to, to support sending that budget back to the Board of Finance. And to hear that that opportunity as of tonight isn't going to happen, it's, it's disappointing. You do have that opportunity in a couple of weeks when we meet again to be able to say, let's send it back to the Board of Finance without touching it. And that's what I strongly recommend the Board to do because I will be one of those advocates to vote no too low if it, if it's presented to the voters as it is for both budgets. And I will encourage the whole crowd to gather and to communicate to make sure that we vote low, no, too low. Thank you.
Hi, Mark Fuller, 31 Dana Street. Mr. Beagle, I think your microphone's off, and you just said, come on. This community is here to speak. They deserve your respect. You just looked, because we all just saw you do it. You said, come on, when she came up. So I'm going to take my full three minutes so that we can all sit here and think about this. It is clear tonight how disconnected five of you are from this community. The Board of Finance is disconnected. You're supposed to serve us. You're using our children as pawns in a political game. As a parent, as a citizen.
As a grandfather, right?
Grandfather, not major. You know, we have, we have a duty to move our children forward, again, as parents, as citizens. And all we've done today is move them back by taking away things that we had the ability to give them. Our taxes, let us vote on that when the budget goes up. Don't sit here addressing the chair who you want us to address, pointing your finger at people, telling them what to do, when to stop. Let us speak our minds and be connected back to the community. I never had an interest in politics. My wife sits on the school board, you heard from her tonight. I may very well now have an interest in politics because you were. Okay, I'm just, I said, I'm going to take the time because Mr. Beagle, I think, wants us to hurry. But again.
Fine, I have, I have all kinds of time.
Okay. So think about our kids, and I hope that you all can go home tonight. Some of you who seem to be younger than others, look at your kids, look at your grandkids, look at your neighbors. Think about what it's going to be like next year when they have to go to school with less teachers. When they don't have the resources they need to succeed in life that were all given to us. We all got the education. Why are we doing this on the population that can't vote for themselves? I mean, that is the definition of cowardice. Take away from those who don't have a voice of their own and can't vote on their own. That's what we did tonight. We took it away from them. So I said, I hope you all sleep well tonight, knowing, and I thank the two of you for supporting all this. There's a lot of hard work that goes into this. It was summarily disrespected, disrespectful of everybody who sat here tonight. Thank you.
Caleb Zuber, and honestly, using the excuse that you need time to look the budget over when all these people in here had that time already. I just want to know, why have you not looked it over yet?
Mr. Cox, you answer that, please. We don't, we don't get into a back and forth, otherwise this will all, like, we do not do that. I'm taking the time to try and explain that to you so you have the benefit of understanding what public speaking is about under your section. I cannot get into that discussion, otherwise I'll be arguing and talking with every single person.
So what I'm taking away from this is you honestly don't have a reason why you either didn't look it over or you're trying to cover up a lie of that's why you're not passing it through. And honestly, to the rest of you, I'm shameful of you guys that you got bullied into it. Like everybody else was saying, go back on it and actually vote for what you want. Not just, oh, it'll cut taxes and make it cheaper, or because he is telling you guys to pretty money. And November will be my first time voting, and I know fine, not.
All right, I'll be brief. Christina Smero-Vagan, South Main Street. I just wanted to point out that the budget books have been out since January of this year, and we've had many meetings and have welcomed anyone, including public, to those meetings, especially the board workshops. And the Board of Education has kept their line open for any questions that might have come of the budget. So to say that there hasn't been time, just as the very smart gentleman before me has stated, is, is very much not true. Thank you.
1218 Thurlow Road. I've seen this before. It wasn't as bad, but I've been through this process years ago. And you're waiting for this room to thin out. You're waiting for parents not to come. We moved mountains tonight, and that's not because I don't, I don't value your time volunteering, but we had children at soccer fields, ballparks, other things. We were on boards too. We had carpools going on, kids that are driving through McDonald's at nine o'clock at night to get here. So you're waiting, and this room is going to thin. It is going to thin, but the thing is, is you came here and you didn't come here with an open mind. Your decision was made ahead of time. Shame on you.
I'm ventures for Harley Lane. I gave my three minutes away last time. I think I might take advantage of the whole three minutes this time. Really disappointing. I think there were several of us actually in tears. No discussion. You were very quick to say, let's vote before anyone can make any further comment. Shame on you for being the role models for the students that are here. Shame on you for not hearing the citizens that you claim to serve. It's not my first time voting in November. I couldn't do the math calculation quickly in my head, but it's been several, over 30 years. And I know where my votes will not go in November, regardless, regardless of what you do going forward. And I will be encouraging the many, many people that I talk to on Facebook and in my neighborhood to also vote in a different way in November. And just like Tanya said, who was a good friend and neighbor of mine, vote no too low. Thank you.
Christine Coyne, 11 East Thunbridge Road. This is just for the people in the back, people online. Eric Peterson, Alice Walk, Brandon Goff, Mark Philhauer, Tim Beagle. Those are the names to remember in November.
Augie Hart, Easton Bridge Road, member of the Board of Ed and a fellow Republican. And I could not be more ashamed of the five of you for not giving the decency to at least take part in discussion and tell two hundred plus people how you felt. They told you how they felt tonight and you couldn't do that at all. You kept your mouth shut. You're probably right in the River East and you're cowards and you raise your hands like puppets that you are.
For in Fourville, forty-two Sunrise. While we're at it, Phil Howard, Beagle, Goff, Walk, Peterson. Those are the names to remember if this budget goes through for some reason. You know what? When your car's getting broken into and a police officer's not there, they cut it. Ambulance doesn't get somewhere on time, someone gets seriously hurt, dies, you guys. School shooting, anything can happen. It's not just education. Nice things cost money. But you know, it is also education. That's why people moved to this town. That's why people are spending a lot of money on houses. And you guys, I mean, just individually, you all go to the bathroom together? You sharing one brain? You had probably somebody I don't agree much with with anything. Mike, look, you have Republicans in here with spines and brains and the ability to go against their own party. You guys just sit there. Not two of you can break away and say, you know what? We've had this thing. You didn't have time to caucus about it beforehand? Jesus, come on. Get it together.
William Fawver, forty-five Schoolhouse Lane. I spoke to you earlier and told you, where do you place education? I now see where you place education. There is a good saying, Senateus populus de Romanus, for the Senate and the people of Rome. This was the founding basis on which the Roman government was born. They stabbed each other in the back. They were corrupt. And yet they did more for education than most of you sitting on this panel did tonight. I have to say, I am very ashamed. And when there is an SNL skit about this, I really hope I'm the one right. Thank you.
Margaret Fawver, nowhere near as eloquent. But yeah, forty-five Schoolhouse Lane in Middle Haddam. And I want to thank Mr. Wright, my fourth grade teacher, for standing up for what he did tonight and Mr. Brown as well. And I know a lot of you personally are absolutely disgusted. I cannot believe, I mean, Chris Fox would vote for education. Allison, how did you? I just astounded at how you have voted tonight and that you didn't give us a chance for discussion. The integrity that's laughing is beyond the pale and never would I ever vote for any of you again. But thank you.
My name is Angelo Lombardo. I live at fourteen Home Drive. So thank you to those who raised their hands to send the budget back. But as a student at EHHS, I can't say enough about the teachers, about the school psychologists. Last year in ninth grade was one of the toughest years of my life. I suffered from suicidal ideation. And the school psychologists quite literally saved my lives. They saved my lives. The teachers saved my life. I can't thank them enough. Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm here again. I very simply want to acknowledge the teacher whose job will be compromised if this bill goes through. A lot of people brought her up before and I'm here to bring her up again. We didn't say her name, but I'm going to say her name. Her name is Lily Keegan. We call her Miss Keegan. She is an indescribably valued English teacher at our school. And I can say confidently, the speaker that you just met, she most definitely played a part in saving their life. And I have no doubt that she will continue to save the lives of children at East Hampton High School. I feel as though not acknowledging her by her name would be an injustice. Thank you.
Hi, this is Marlene Geary and I'm at thirty-eight one Gong again. And I, I just want to call attention to something that happened earlier. Mr. Goff, there seemed to be some confusion after the vote was taken as to whether or not you could continue to discuss the motion. And so you asked about it of Chairman Philhauer and he told you that, that there was to be no more discussion because of the vote. As a result of that, Roberts Rules of Orders say that you can issue, the prevailing voters, the prevailing side can issue a move to reconsider that vote and to have discussion around that. I'm sure our town manager can, can guide us through those rules of procedure. But if the prevailing side voted or offered to consider a motion, consider this motion to reconsider, that's something that you could do at this point during the meeting. You can do that only during the meeting at which an action was taken, but it is an opportunity available to you at this time to look at this again and to open it up again for discussion. Thank you.
Malia Manderman, thirty-seven Royal Oaks Avenue. So we spent almost two hours talking to the council. And some of you didn't like what we had to say or like you. And you just, so like majority of you voted against the proposal to send it back to the Board of Finance after a lot of us spent countless hours of our lives just talking to you about how this is very important to us. And let's see what happens in November. Thank you.
Irene. Hello, Irene Cook, eleven South Main Street. I just wanted to reiterate what a lot of other people said, that I'm extremely disappointed in the town council not sending the budget back to the Board of Finance. I think this was a very missed opportunity. I also urge the town council to have the three ballot questions on the referendum. It is yes for the budget, no too low, or no too high. Every single referendum that we hold costs at a minimum, I believe, and this was, I think, a few years ago, thirty thousand dollars. Every referendum. If you have three, you could have already saved a teacher's position. Please keep that in mind. I urge you to put those no too low or no too high questions on the ballot. Thank you.
Hi, this is Kitty Roman, thirty-six Easton Bridge Road. I just want to kind of, at first I want to state my disappointment along with everyone else. But I also want to point out, this is not the first time we've been here. This is not the first time we've cut this budget. It has been being cut for ten years. And then someone has the audacity to blame this on the teachers that we have lower test scores? Come on. Like just, that's ridiculous. Like you got to think about what the consequences of your own actions are. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Hearing the more public...
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I make a statement?
Certainly, go ahead.
As Yogi Bear said, it ain't over till it's over and it ain't over yet. I'm wondering, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Philhauer, but maybe Mr. Cox would wish to take this question. There is a process and we haven't completed that process yet, Mr. Chairman. I understand that we sort of limited the conversation tonight and, and the budget did not move back to the Board of Finance. But everyone sitting here needs to understand that it's the town council that has to approve the budget. So the budget is still on the table. We're just not discussing it tonight. Two weeks from now, I surmise we probably will. And so unless I am in error, Mr. Cox, I believe this is just the beginning. We have to make a decision as a town council at some point to send it to the referendum.
Yes, and my comment on that as well, Mr. Wright, and you've been sitting here, you and Mr. Brown, as long as I have. There have been multiple times where we've had more than one meeting to decide what we're going to do with the budget. So this is not something new that we decided tonight, that tonight was our decision. When we have two hundred people in the audience giving us comment, we would like to take some time, digest those comments and come back and have some conversation about the budget. That's the process we take. David, the referendum question, that's not thirty thousand dollars per referendum. It's about what, three, five hundred, four thousand, six, somewhere.
I don't want to, I don't want to guess, but I'm very certain it's not thirty thousand dollars. We have, I mean, the Registrier's Office, for example, has a, is a small portion of this budget, not more than thirty thousand dollars in total from handling all of its election responsibilities. So I don't want to guess for fear of being wrong, but it's certainly not thirty thousand dollars for each.
Thirty-five hundred to five thousand was the rough numbers I remember. I believe they're in that ballpark. But next we have an exact number for us, just so we can be precise. Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the council this time? So then I'd like to go to Communications, like, hi, everybody, we have a memorial parade coming up. Anyone who wants to attend to be there at eight-thirty. We have multiple correspondence about the budget and it's never... Is there any more correspondence coming before this council? Here in Nunca, a motion adjourned. So go. Have secondhand and discussion, all in favor, five pairs.